Make sure the heat up so it's over quick. Okay, thank you, everybody. Welcome to Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors meeting. We're going to be meeting, please all stand for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, a free God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Please all be aware tonight's meeting is being video recorded. Carol, could you make a note in the record that we had an executive session on a legal matter? Thank you. First up is the receipt of the meeting minutes from July 27th. Are there any questions from the members of the board?
Make a motion.
Can I have a second? All those in favor say aye. Thank you. Receipt of invoice history of July 2021, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Next up is receipt of the year-to-date budget report and balance sheet, June 2021. Finance director, he's got that for his word, he got word Chuck now. I was gonna say, thank you Chuck for getting this. Okay, can I have a motion? Have a second? All those in favor say aye. Oh, all right, but I forgot to mention Kathy Hunziger will not be joining us tonight. She had another engagement, so this is, this is everybody. Thank you. Next up is a resolution to approve the, okay, this is the folkways eliminating the consolidation of the parcel. That's a confusing bit of information there. So Neil, is our.
We've been representatives of Paul Place.
Oh, okay. That would be great, could you introduce yourself?
Sure. Good evening, John I know is here for Paul Place. We're receiving resolution, although he almost listed the resolution or acceptable to us. Essentially what this project is, is just submitting the prior approval to remove the 20 acres of Peter's track. So if you stay, we'll do that to the 19 requirements. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
What's the staff report on this? I mean, are they recommending this resolution?
The staff has recommended the resolution is basically removing the Peter's track with the 20 acre site that I think Paul Place found out as they were recording the plan of it under a 319 statute. So this does not affect the S units or anything else, and we'll go back to two parcels.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any, any questions from members of the board? Any questions from members of the audience?
Make a motion that we approved resolution 2021-14.
Okay, can I have a second? All those in favor say aye. Thank you, motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is a letter to township manager for Gilmore, from Gilmore Associates concerning strategic project analysis. Ed, you're up. Sure, please come on up.
How's everybody doing? My name is Ed Brown. Jay Hirsch had a family matter he hadn't run to, so I'm stepping in and in place. So this is a strategic plan proposal to put together a, eventually put together a sketch plan for a possible public works building on the property behind the spring house.
Shopping Center? You know what, why don't I stop you there? I didn't, I didn't let anybody in the audience know why, why we'd asked for this, so.
Yes.
All right, so let me give you a little bit of background so people in the audience understand too. The township's public works department is out of room. Our facilities are spread over three different locations. We've been looking for an opportunity to secure a site preferably inside the township where we can consolidate all of our equipment. It's very inefficient and we need a truck in one location, somebody's gotta get in the car with the driver, drive over there, get a truck, or if they need some salt, or the brine, the salt's in one location, the brine's in another location. It's really not an effective way to run a township. So we've been looking at, you know, opportunities. Where could we go? And how much room do we need? And why do we need that room? Right? Because we, we really need to have a, a firm understanding of what our requirements are, why they are what they are. So asked our engineer to, to look at a piece of property across the street because that's pretty much what's left in the township that could possibly be built on. And I asked Jim, I said, Jim, we had a meeting with Jim, Daniel and I, and of course he doesn't show up. He's, he's got, he had, he had, he had a family emergency and he called me before this and he said he briefed you. And so, so that's why you're here, so everybody knows. I figured that would, that would help everybody orient themselves, so, okay, now Ed. Now I threw you under the bus a little bit, right? So.
No, so this proposal basically, there's various steps included. Obviously interviews for different persons throughout the township and public works record to determine current and even future meetings for the public works department to determine the space needed and then eventually develop a sketch plan to show inside of everything.
Right.
For the record, I just want to let you know, and the board members know this. I spoke to the president for the record of Gwinnett Mercy about the desire. I have five months left after 35 years and to know exactly what Mark has spelled out. We're all over the place. We have an old mansion in the back here that we own and the public works department needs the garage to put in things. You know, like Mark said, we're all over the place. And if we don't move quickly because of the availability of that site, to have a four-lane highway on both sides coming in from a Bethlehem pipe right behind the giant where they're already getting trucks and so forth. This traffic isn't going to be a problem. The police department is completely packed. They need expansion. If our public works department moves out, it's going to enable us to utilize more room for the police department. And Mark has, has spelled out, this is, you know, a step forward on this project. But I wanted to let know the people that are here, why we're doing this. It's just, all I have to do is follow our public works people all around this township. They're going from one place to another, you know, it's just totally ridiculous. They have their meeting room, they can't meet together. So I'll stop there. So I think this is a positive way to move on that before that property is locked in by somebody else. Because we're talking about eight to 10 acres behind the giant and.
So he's gonna tell us?
Yeah.
Yeah, what, what do we need? Right, exactly, right, that's the whole idea behind all this. Are there any more questions for our engineers from the, from the board of supervisors or the staff? How about it, and the audience, are there any questions from the audience concerning this proposal? Now, okay.
I have a question, Mark.
Go ahead.
So the, the request is to, to determine how much space we're going to need, not how much of that space behind giant we're going to need. So it's a generic request. Okay, thank you.
Now Craig, this is a letter. This is a, the letter is actually a proposal, so you need, you need a, you need a vote, is that correct?
We need a vote to move forward with Gilmore to the future plan for the public works facility. Partly due to three months, it was the 23,850 dollars.
I'll make a motion for us to approve the letter of the township manager from Gilmore Associated dated August 19th regarding the facility project strategic analysis.
I have a second, I have a second, all those in favor say aye. Motion passes, thanks Ed.
That's the easiest presentation you make.
Tell Jim we hope everything works out with his family, all right?
Yes.
Next up is Pendleton Park striping plan. The striping plan, most people don't know, but we have, many people don't know. Over in Pendleton Park, we have basketball courts and we have a pickleball court. And the court was in need of a lot, a lot of work. And in, one of the things that we have to decide or, or we've been asked to decide is the striping of the pickleball court. So this has gone back and forth and so right now I'd like to throw it open to the board of supervisors or perhaps the chairman of our parks and rec, Kathy Morris is here. If anybody has any thoughts or recommendations on striping the, the court over there for pickleball.
I have a comment, I have a comment to make. So we received from Gilmore Associates an opinion of the probable cause summary as it relates to the buffering, whether it be, whether landscaping or an actual physical barrier. The place around the tennis courts that exist so as to kind of reduce the noise pollution to the, to the neighbors adjacent and across the street. So the total amount for the entirety of those recommendations is $47,740. That also includes adjustable height basketball nets. I think what I took away from all of this is that we're trying to, I guess, put additional monies to fix a situation that we know is not ideal. I think that we can, well, I'm going to speak for myself, I would agree that this is not the most appropriate place for pickleball. And I appreciated the email that one of our residents, Pedro, shared as it related to, he was kind of in agreement that this is not the most ideal place for pickleball. That maybe we should take some time and actually take a step back, think about where is the most ideal place that may not include the necessity for us to have a sound barrier, thus reducing the cost of actually installing it, making all of the courts available so that it's more than just two courts, but potentially more so that, that robust games can continue, kind of similar to what other municipalities in our area have existing. So my recommendation would be for us to leave the tennis court as it is, to include the adjustable height basketball nets as it relates to our younger residents who want to play basketball at Pendleton Park. And then move forward with ascertaining, maybe after we get the park and rec survey, where the most appropriate place to put pickleball would be.
I'd like to thank you for making that comment. But Kathy, I have learned the high demand for pickleball. I mean, a year and a half ago or whatever, pickleball, what's pickleball? Well, I found out what pickleball is and I have seen it, I've heard it. And the interest is much higher than even tennis because you have, I guess, four participating, it's a smaller court and so forth. And what Danielle was saying, I always have. And again, if that was the, the spot, we're for pickleball. Because I, the people in Pendleton, I, I've known since the middle seventies. And I have a huge concern on the noise. Now Danielle filled me in with comments about the court that they use in Ambler and her comments. I, I'd like to hear from you as for your comments. As for, is this a better site than compared to Oxford or the Pen Ambler site? I had mentioned the, the Pen Ambler site up against the railroad tracks at the, at the end of the parking lot. There's no residents over there, the sound wouldn't be a problem. Oxford, again, is removed from a lot of residential. So would you comment on my concerns?
Can, we're getting comments that the public can't, they need you to use the microphone, the, yeah, the speaker. I don't know, yeah, maybe, I would just pull it closer to you.
I have to tell you the, the numbers that it just showed were the first time that I seen them. So I didn't get that information, must have just happened, it just happened. We just, we, I didn't, so it wasn't shared, we didn't know how much that was.
And you're chairman of the park?
Yes, it's fine, I mean, I mean, so I just want to get myself together to see how much it was. But I'm not surprised, however, let me just step back. If that, the Parks and Rec's recommendation about striping the, the Pendleton Park court because that is the only existing tennis court that we have. That is the reason why. So to put it in almost to restore to that for what it was, because there was one court line. So our, our recommendation of the two courts was just kind of moving in a little bit, but then looking into the sound barriers. This is the first I saw with acoustic fence. And that's what I looked into after we all left, I saw acoustic fence and that was the recommendation to use the acoustic fence. I have, we all have a concern about the residence that's right there, that house is right there and I do. They've got issues with the rest. There are, we are looking into other places, yes. But I think it's nice to have multiple places, it should be nice to have multiple sites, not just one. If we can do like some of the town, I just, by the way, I took pickleball, of course, the last couple of weeks. I took a clinic to learn about it so I could understand. And, you know, I went and played on a court that was eight, there were eight of them. You know, that they can easily put four and four in a space. I don't know if we have a space to do that. We were just talking about, we have space where the public works, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if there's space, what, what's basically out there. However, we did look at possibly somewhere in Oxford Park and right, maybe over at Pen Ambler. We'd have to look at that a little bit more. Where, where, where we're suggesting, I'm not sure, there might be some other issues. But that's, we're, we can have a look into it.
Well, Kathy, let me ask you this. You're, you're confirming my concerns. My question is, would you and your committee, the park and rec committee, recommend us to proceed at Pendleton and still knowing that you don't have answers as for the other areas?
Not with this amount of money, no.
Okay.
No.
All right.
I think that's, no, I don't know, for just those two courts, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't think that would be right and that's that much for.
All right. Well, I, I appreciate your honesty in saying that and, and the fact that, the fact that the purpose of having these committees is to have you and your committee see this ahead of time before it comes to us to make a recommendation of your committee to us. And this seems to be one, to me, a fast track before we get your blessing. I mean, that's, that's what I'm hearing.
That might be because of the time constraints.
Right.
Because we'd have to vote today in order to get in time for the striping that's already scheduled. Remember, remember the last meeting? People postponed it because of this. So I think that there might have been a little bit of skipping.
This is the first that we saw this, we know, we, we were looking into it, standing, we were hoping into it ourselves. We're trying to get some, some numbers. There was, you know, there were some things I heard about the buffer, the buffer doesn't, I mean, what we were talking about, maybe it didn't have to be the full length round, but it's still, it's, it's still a pretty hefty number, so I think that maybe we should take a step back. But I do think we should look into putting pickleball somewhere in the future. And I think it will come out in the survey.
I, I would be shocked from just the reaction that I have gotten. People want to educate me every time I turn around and soon as I mentioned it, so.
And, and just by the way, I didn't think it was noisy there, but I thought, and I played with 20 people.
Okay.
It was, it was, but not as noisy as I thought everybody was saying how noisy it was. I didn't think so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so Craig, in order to get this done, you needed a positive vote now, is that correct?
A, a striking vote now, yes.
Okay, does somebody want to put together a motion?
So my motion would be to, to include adjustable height basketball nets and that process and have the striping and the revamping of Pendleton Park, but to delay a table, the implementation of pickleball on the tennis courts.
Okay, can I have a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Okay Craig, is that, you got everything you need?
We're keeping the test court as is and we're adding the adjustable nets on the new basketball side.
Correct. But Craig, as I understand the motion also that we're not going to strike for pickleball.
We're just tabling.
Yeah, tabling it. Yeah, thank you.
We have a, we have a hand raised from the.
Is there a hand up?
Yeah.
Um, this is Deborah Schaefer, I'm assuming that my hand was being recognized. Apologies for asking for clarification or repetition because I could not hear anything that was said at the podium. Could you tell me what, what you just approved?
Yeah.
Deborah, we, we approved to move forward with the striping and leave the tennis courts as is to include an adjustable height basketball nets on the basketball court, but to table the striping of pickleball at this time.
So does that also mean tabling the cost of the.
Acoustic barrier.
Arbervady at $8,400?
What's the bottom line?
The, and the, and the $12,600 for the sound barrier?
Yes, so we're tabling pickleball, so thus we're tabling also the, the sound barrier related to pickleball.
Okay, thank you very much.
So are there any more questions from online? Jamie?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Any, any member of the audience have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Chief, why don't, next up is authorization and extend deployment office, office offer. Want to have these here guys come in?
Hi, good evening. We're here tonight to ask for recommendation to hire office, or officer. Of course, before the court, Garrett Vale. We went through a testing process along with 17 other, 17 other communities in Montgomery County. This has been going on for about four or five months now. We will have a retirement in the police department next month. And what I've learned over the years is that you have to be fast when you're trying to hire the best. If you wait, you lose people. So we're thrilled that Garrett is here tonight and I know you've met him. We had oral interview board, if I'm not sure that Gloria is not here. We took community members, join us, Gloria Jones and Bob Law on the interview panel. We feel it's important to have community input. And it was pretty much all in agreement that Garrett shined above the rest. That's about it, you've all met him, if anybody has any questions, we'd like your permission to start Garrett tomorrow. And I'm not wasting time, if he's available, we're gonna have a midnight shift tonight. We, we could use his help and we're looking, Garrett, just a little bit of background, Garrett has police law enforcement experience. He has two years' experience at Jacobtown Police Department. And he's also worked part-time at Bristol Borough. So he comes us with a lot of experience and just a great guy.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to go on record and mention the fact that Tessie McNally and myself, as a subcommittee, met Garrett and were thoroughly impressed. And the rest of supervisors met him tonight and questioned. I want to commend you and your staff for bringing this individual to us. As you had stated, and the public may not know, the number of applicants years ago, two years for a lot of these people that realized, we used to have 405, 400 to up to 500 people applied for police applications with the rest of the municipalities around us. And what was it, 100 and some this year?
103.
103. Now, out of 103 and the needs from the other municipalities are great. And for us, Lower Gwinnett, to secure this officer who is experienced and has been very, very impressive to the subcommittee, to the board of supervisors, it's a commendable thing for you as chief to make sure we get the best. Because the men that are here, I think, are the best. I think highly of them. I, I know the rest of the board do. We hear from the residents. And I, I just think this year has been the toughest opportunity for us to get the best because of the limitations of the candidates available and the demand in other municipalities. I commend you and our officers because he talks to them, he knows them, and they gave him encouraging remarks. And that's, it just is so satisfying to me. I congratulate you and our police officers that are here. But to, to be able to have this new applicant confirmed tonight and sworn in a, in a few weeks. Congratulations to you and your staff.
Thank you. So I, I look like they're now three quarters of the police department here. Some of them are on Zoom tonight, they couldn't make it, but they're joining us on Zoom.
Right.
You know, we don't get to hire too many people and it's a big deal when we do. It, it's a joint effort and, and we're, we're a great group.
Oh, I know that.
It means a lot to bring somebody new on. 35 years ago, I was his size, I've been carrying these guys the first time. So it's getting a little old, so it's going to get some young strength. But I, I appreciate your comments, I appreciate you and Tessie coming in on a moment's notice to make sure we could secure this. The whole board's always been supportive.
Well, if we didn't move quickly, we'd have lost it.
We lost it.
Yeah, and.
Also here tonight is Officer Veronica Sims from Woodpein Police Department. She has a little interest in Tony.
Is she the other half?
Well, they're not married. They're as close as probably getting married as we could have. Maybe we'll have a joint ceremony in two weeks. The judge is going to be here.
I was going to ask if you wanted to talk now or forever hold his peace, but I think I'm gonna wait.
But that's all I have.
Okay, well, I'd just like to thank the, the police department here, both the men and the women. We have an outstanding force. And you know, Paul, you and I talked privately about, you know, people, people want to come here. And they do want to work or they do want to work at our police force, they do want to stay in our community. And that, and that says a lot. The police, the police, we probably have the most educated police force in all, all of Montgomery County. And in the, in the residents of the township know that. And just in case they don't, I always remind them. And they, they always have good things to say. I mean, it's, where do you work, where do you live when that, everybody's of that mind? Where anymore? And the answer is, well, here. All right, so Garrett, thank you for accepting our offer. Would you like to say any words?
Um, I would say thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak a few earlier today and trusting me to, for your task. I would like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak a few hours later tonight and trusting me to be a pass all for that activity.
Well, thank you, and welcome aboard. I'd shake your hand, but I know we shouldn't. Well, congratulations and welcome aboard. Oh, we need a motion. Okay, can I have a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Welcome.
You should have pictures.
I'd like to just make one comment in addition to what Ed said. Notwithstanding that maybe there was only a hundred candidates to choose from, I think you would have risen to the top even if there were four hundred to choose from. So we really appreciate you joining our community, so thank you.
Thanks Tessie for saying that. I agree. Sure.
Come on, board of supervisors down front.
We good, all right. Next up, Chad, update on the traffic engineering study on Brookside Avenue.
About the mowing thing.
I've jumped ahead, moved my notes here. I guess I didn't want to mow too much tonight, right? All right, we can advertise. Craig, what is the mowing contract this year?
Our contract is up at the end of the season. You could go out in the fall, secure your mowing contract for three years. You can get a secure option on that. We'd love to go out to bid as possible and hopefully have numbers by the end of September, September fourth meeting.
Okay, so it's just an authorization advertised. Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, now Chad, could you fill us in on the Brookside Avenue study? Chad is our traffic engineer for those online.
Sure, thank you. Township staff received an inquiry back in the beginning of the summer asking that the township take a look at potential cut-through traffic issues on Brookside Avenue related to Amber, you know, traffic generated from Amber Yards and also traffic coming to and from the high school nearby. Since North Spring Garden Street is a state-owned road, PennDOT provides guidelines and conditions that must be met before restricting turning movements or through movements in an intersection in order to address cut-through traffic issue. So the first step that they recommend is collecting some traffic volume data to quantify what the daily and peak hour traffic volumes are on the particular road that's in question or street. So the Public Works Department and police put out the newly acquired traffic data collection equipment that was purchased by the township earlier this year to collect those volumes. Machines were out there for seventeen days, basically the second half of June to collect some preliminary traffic volume data. What they found, the counts came back at the daily average of traffic was three hundred and twenty vehicles. The AM peak average, highest AM peak average was forty-one vehicles, and the highest average PM peak hour traffic volume was twenty-six vehicles. The guidelines that PennDOT gives for this type of initial data collection effort and whether to make a determination whether you go forward with a full-blown traffic engineering study that's required by the vehicle code. They set parameters of a thousand daily traffic volume for the rotor street and a hundred directional traffic volume during the AM or PM peak hour. So the volumes that were collected in the second half of June fall short of those parameters. However, based on when the inquiry came in and when they were able to get the equipment out and when the data was collected in the second half of June, we were only able to collect or catch the last couple of days of the school year related to the high school, and I believe even those two days, the seniors were done at that point. And in terms of, you know, commuter traffic associated with Amber Yards, we were just starting to come out of the COVID restrictions and people, more people returning to their offices to work there in June. So our recommendation, and we've talked to staff about this, is to set the machines back out again either in the second half of September or the first half of October to collect more data, to take into account school traffic more and more people returning to their workplace to work every day. And we'll see what the numbers bear out at that point. And then, you know, we can come back and give you another briefing on what that date is and a recommendation on whether or not we're a full-blown traffic study.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Sounds like some people did a lot of work here. I'm gonna go back again. I think it makes a lot of sense. Even in September, you know, we have no idea what's gonna happen.
Sure.
And no one else does either, right, at this point. So all we can do is the best we can do, and I think you guys have done a good job doing that. Are there any questions from members of the board?
I'd like to make a comment other than Brookside, but it's, to me, it's related. And I am happy to hear you're gonna go back out. I live across from the high school, and a lot of times I come in from Bethlehem Pike. But I guess it was in May, I came in from Ambler and Newt Night Grove. And the elementary school was let out. And I tell you, I was blown away and happy because I used to walk to school in Norristown years ago before anybody here was alive. And to see the number of children leaving that elementary school and walking and parents waiting for them and coming down Houston Road at night. And when school was left out, and then making a left. The only way, the safe, the only safe thing for for the students and the parents was for the traffic to stop. And we stopped a good fifteen to twenty, twenty-five minutes. That's how many students. I was thrilled to see it. But I want to point out to you that there was a concern I had about giving that one crossing guard at Houston and Knight. That responsibility of those children. And I just want to make sure you're aware of it. And I don't know if it can be tied in to this, but it was enlightening to me. I liked what I saw, but I want to make sure that Lower wanted does the best safety regard for these children and parents. So I just wanted to go on record, so you know that.
Okay.
And Danielle, you probably know what I'm talking about. I wasn't aware of the number of children. It just wasn't a few. There had to be.
And I think last year, you know, the amount of kids riding school buses was way down. Parents taking, dropping them off and picking it back up.
Oh, yeah.
That volume went way, way up last year.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I see them lined up there. There's more cars and buses, and the buses are still there, but there's only one or two on the bus, and it's it's just unbelievable. But these are children in Ambler and Lower Wanted area walking, and to me, I'm just guessing that they walk all the time. You would know better.
Yes. So I want to just touch on what you said and kind of add other statements. Though, everybody within a mile of the school, you have to walk. So Brookside, Francis, Houston, Marion, all the way down, Hendricks. They're required to walk. Some of those streets actually don't have sidewalks, but the children living on those streets are still required to walk to and from school. It's kind of presented some concerns and changing of our community, especially with businesses that maybe weren't existing in previous years, now kind of thriving of changed traffic flow, and people are utilizing different streets for working and other activities. So the dynamic of walking on a quiet Brookside or Francis or Marion or even Houston, Fulton, who, like, all of that is a little bit different now that people are traveling to, you know, businesses in the other areas for work and other things. So I guess it's very, I think it's important that you do, and I'm glad you're repeating it again in September. I think the concern that I have is that, A, we know that children are walking on the streets as required. There aren't sidewalks. And then if we are encountering individuals who are maybe, you know, taking liberties and going a little bit above the speed limit or the threshold of what would be safe, or we would want our kids to be walking in. How do we account for that? Is there any way to account for that in your study? And then I guess, I guess my other, my other concern is, it's so, the one thousand daily car threshold has to be met before it even could be considered by PennDOT. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's meant as a guideline, sort of a minimum threshold. And I think it's meant particularly just to ensure that traffic calming measures aren't going out and being put on every street just because they're requested.
Yeah.
But even if it's a little bit lower than that threshold, if there's special circumstances that exist, you know, that can certainly be taken into account.
Yeah.
It may be safety at any of the intersections. The pedestrian facility issue may be a separate thing that's looked at in terms of improving crossings and adding pedestrian facilities along particular streets. But we can certainly make sure we take a look at that when we visit the data.
And I just want to make sure that I'm clear in saying that the school district, especially Wade Coleman, has been very responsive and worked with everybody that's asked or inquired about on the different streets about, you know, safety, bus safety, because the school buses do use those streets to get to their garage. So it is, it is a regular occurrence, but there's been no, no issue there. I guess what everybody is thinking is just trying to ensure safety and to avoid any kind of major mishap.
Sure.
So thank you.
Okay, so anybody else, any supervisors, staff have any questions?
Yeah, I don't have a question, just another comment. There's been some interest in the community about increasing children's ability to ride to school on buses, and so they would be coming, I assume, those same routes. So that's something else to keep in mind in terms of safety that we might be in the future, giving that a greater consideration and seeing what we could do to accommodate that request.
Any questions from anyone online or members of the audience? No? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chad. Keep up the good work. Right. Next up, public comments. Is there anybody in the audience who are online that has any questions, concerns, issues, or items that are not on the agenda? I'm not seeing anybody, okay, thank you. Next up is the manager's report. Craig, do you have anything to report?
I have a couple things. The budget prep for 2022 started a couple weeks ago. We're targeting a Monday, October eighteenth, budget workshop meeting with supervisors opening at six o'clock that night. The MCAGO football convention, same the date went out last week. It will be October first, well, at this point, it will be October first from eight-thirty AM to plus PM in Kinko, Russia. I guess more is the follow-up that's for the elected officials to participate if you deem wanted. And the township office will be fully ready the Thursday.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, we hope it would be closed. Thank you. Supervisors' comments, Mr. Brandt?
Well, I just think it's a special evening when we add a police officer to our ranks, one that I am thrilled that we got under the conditions that are already stated. And I already mentioned, I congratulated the chief for bringing such a Garrett to us and for us to get a hold of him. And it speaks well of you and otherwise and I'm also happy about the report from Gilmore on the township taking a look at the facility project for Public Works. And the changes that are necessary in this township between that and then the expansion of the police department. That concludes my remark, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Tessie?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the township manager and our public works officer for the nice blacktopping job on the street. I think it turned out great.
Is that your street?
It's my street.
After her election?
Just one tiny thing to bring to your attention, though, on the street, there's a cul-de-sac that has a couple of trees which are dying. If somebody could just have a look at those. Thank you. You know, we do have those. We have those two circles that are available.
Thank you. Danielle?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out. I want to wish everybody to enjoy, you know, enjoy their evening and the rest of the summer days. And I wanted to congratulate Chief Kenny on bringing us a fine candidate, and we appreciate all your hard work and dedication.
Thank you. Just so everybody's aware, our summer schedule now is over for the board of supervisors. We now meet on the second and the fourth Tuesday of the month. And so we're back to our regular, regular schedule. And if anybody, again, has any questions or concerns or issues, the township is open. People see some signs on the doors and so forth, and they're not really sure what that means, but we are open. You don't have to schedule an appointment. You do have to wear a mask. And we're following CDC guidelines. That's why everybody here is in a mask, just letting everybody know. So thank you very much for attending and have a good night.